Father, we thank you so much for everything you've given each one of us, God. And we thank you for the opportunity to live in this country and live in a country where we're free. God, I pray that tonight you would be with us as we do business for the school district. God, I pray that you'd give us wisdom to make good decisions. And God, I pray that you would just be with all the teachers and admin and everyone that's getting ready for school to start back. God, I pray that you'd give them strength and just give them guidance and wisdom as they teach and deal with the children. God, I just pray that you would, and just bless as many as you see.
Yes, she is.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Now we have special reports. We'll start off with FFA. Y'all will want to come on up. Then they have a travel request.
My name is Brooklyn Mott and I'm the president of the Huntsville FFA chapter.
My name is Desiree Seaver and I'm the secretary of Huntsville FFA chapter.
And my name is Rebecca Mason and I am the vice president of the Huntsville FFA chapter. And we are here to propose our trip to National Convention in Indianapolis. The dates are Tuesday, October 25th through Saturday, October 29th. And it's going to be held at Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis, Indiana. For National Convention, we have four main objectives. So our first objective is to discover and experience premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. These three points are the pillars of FFA as an organization. Our second objective is to demonstrate and explore leadership and career skills. We'll do this by attending national LDE competitions, which by attending those, we can see the best of the best participants in those competitions and be able to learn things to take back to our chapter to help our team members make our teams better. And also by going through career success tours. Our third objective is to network with FFA members and various stakeholders. By this, we will be able to meet other FFA members throughout the nation, which we're really excited about, including members from Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. And our fourth objective is to identify emerging technologies, innovations, and leaders within the agriculture industry, which we'll do that by listening to our keynote speakers as well as all the sessions hosted by our national FFA officers.
We know that there is a shortage of bus drivers, and so we're not willing to burden on anyone for to get a bus driver to drive us to Indianapolis. So we're going to take a mini-bus provided by the school district. And slightly in scale, our advisors are going to drive us. And it's approximately 1,300 miles from Huntsville to Indianapolis and then travel throughout the city during the week. And then from Indianapolis to Huntsville.
For our housing, we plan to seek approval to utilize an Airbnb for the occasion, which is just a house that we'll rent while we're there that somebody owns for people to come and stay in for a short amount of time while they're in Indianapolis. We chose to pick an Airbnb because we decided that the cost is more effective and efficient for our chapter as well as students with looking at options such as housing at the convention hall, hotels, and other options around the areas. We decided that an Airbnb will be the most cost-efficient. The housing also has sufficient rooms and a layout to account for male and female separation while sleeping with the advisors in between to make sure that there is significant separation. And the house that we have picked has five bedrooms with seven beds and three baths. And as our officer team and I was looking at it, we were all really excited. So that's something to be looking forward to.
So we know this is a very costly trip and we're not asking for any money. So we're doing donations. And so the total cost is about $731. And the most expensive is the convention registration, which there's rodeo and a concert and a career tour. And that's $248. And the only thing that the student would be responsible for is a deposit, which is $75. And then your own spending money that you will take.
Starting earlier this July, we were doing donation calendars with the month of July and August. And what it is, you'll pick a day, say like July 14th. And you would sponsor that day, so you paid the student $14. And we've had great success with that this year. We've raised about $5,000 from people within community, and we're very thankful for that. And we plan on doing blue and gold as well, which I'm pretty sure everyone here is familiar with it. If you're not, we sell meat such as sausage, bacon, and chicken, and whatever extra proceeds that comes with that, that all goes straight into our chapter plans. So our itinerary for this trip is provided on the second page of your packet. And it is not definite yet. It's still pending because the itinerary for the 2022 National Convention has not been released yet. However, this itinerary that y'all have is based on the agenda from last year and previous years. And they're normally pretty close, so this just gives us a pretty close idea of what this convention will look like. So this includes five general sessions, career success tours, the National FFA Museum Tour, the World's Topist Rodeo, and a concert, which the artist is to be determined. And I personally have had the opportunity to attend a National Convention in the past. And I had a blast, but more importantly, I learned a lot and was able to take a lot back to my chapter. And I think that that is something that if anyone gets the opportunity to go to, they should not pass it up. Thank you guys so much for the time tonight. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask us.
What is it that you have, maybe one? I can't remember what, what are the future farmer, is that like the top award you can get in your chapter or something like that? What is that called? Do they still do that?
The American degree? Or are you thinking about the state farmer degree?
I don't know. It used to give it was like the very few kids in the state and in the chapters got it. But this was forty something years ago when I was in school. If they got it, it was like the highest thing you could get being in the FFA chapter.
That's the American degree, which only, it's only a few thousand people get it. And there's quite, there's, it's like a very small percentage of all the FFA members are able to reach a point where they get their American degree. But those are present at National Convention. But you can't get that degree until after you've graduated. It's in like your second year of colleges as soon as you can get it, your first or second year. So everyone, all of us are too young to get that degree right now. But that is something that they do give out and they'll hand those out at National Convention. So we'll get to see that if we get to go.
I have a cousin, one that I'll call him, he's a business, I think, well, thank you, he was a senior, but it was something. It was a degree, it was just like the award.
It's called the Star Farmer Award.
It made me what it was, Tom, you might have been brilliant.
Star Farmer Award.
Okay, that was, that was a pretty good thing. I just want to still be there. Thank you.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Does our insurance cover the bus, the buses and kids?
It does, up to five million when we go out of state.
Okay, that's all mine, okay.
Do you get a motion to approve their travels?
When we approve, are we approving?
Just getting to go with their, their travel.
I'll second.
All in favor?
In favor.
Motion carries. You guys have fun.
Because they have the chance to go to the zoo.
It's cool.
It is the best job ever to go to the zoo.
Best stadium in the world. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you guys.
Up next, we have Jeremiah Herman. He's from Arkansas Energy Office. He's going to give us some presentation options or just options on what's out there for potential savings.
All right, this is going to be as if not more exciting than a trip to Indianapolis. You better make it good, right? Knock yourself out. And I was not expecting this many people.
I'm going to let you guys, I mean, it'll be, yeah, take one.
Well, I want to thank you guys for letting me come up here and speak with you today. Warren, Ms. Warren reached out to me not too much longer ago. I think it was after a conversation that he had with Johnny Coleman with Integrity. It's one of our pre-qualified energy service companies that we do a lot of work with through my program. So I want to take this opportunity to give you guys a little bit of what it looks like from the state side of an energy performance contract.
You didn't hit the clicker?
All right. So energy performance contracting for school districts. So a little bit of the current situation that we find in a lot of school districts across our state is that we have this increasing backlog of like deferred maintenance that we're facing. These are chillers and boilers that are needing, that are into their useful life. HVAC systems, they're probably also at the end of their useful life as well that need to be replaced or at least recommissioned. We also are looking at escalating utility costs. You know, we just had this census not too long ago. And so we have some school districts that are shrinking, some that have grown over the past 10 years. All the while, the facilities still need to maintain the same level of service and comfortability for staff and students. Again, a lot of these facilities were built back in a time when we didn't have this big push for sustainability and energy services that we have today. And with the current environment that we're coming rounding out of with COVID, the emphasis on air quality and the health of our HVAC systems has become more prevalent as well. So these are all certain things that school districts are trying to address. So how, with all these things that we're facing, what are ways that we can do that? Now, sometimes people are lucky enough to have the cash on hand if you're lucky enough. Or you may have to pass like a mileage, and we know the headache that comes with that. So an alternate way that we have here in the state of Arkansas to address these types of issues is through performance contracting. And with the energy performance contract, what we have is a guaranteed way using three buckets of savings: utility savings, air energy savings, capital cost avoidance, and also operational and maintenance savings. By taking those, we are able to pay for the services, the implementation of the energy cost saving measures into facilities. So in this illustration here, we have, you have your current operational costs. You are able to implement the energy conservation measures, taking those savings, and that becomes your capital payment to pay for those savings while you get to enjoy your new operational costs. The good thing about the energy savings program is that it is a guarantee built into it that the savings have to cover whatever the cost of the implementation is. So that's in the legislation and it has to cover that amount. Any excess savings gets to be retained by the public entity to be used for whatever purposes that you may have. And any shortfall that may happen has to be made up for by the energy service company. This is input into the legislation that you have available to you. Take a look. Got you. So another way to take a look at this is just let's say you're spending a million dollars on utilities. But let's say you're spending this amount. Now, you have this bottom part of $700,000, and that would be what you would be spending regardless of whether or not you did these energy savings, uh, energy savings measures. But if you did these energy savings measures, it's about $300,000 right there of avoidable costs. And they're become available funds. So you have to ask yourself, what, what could we be doing with these available funds? Business as usual is that we continue on deferring projects, paying for high utility costs when we don't have to. Or we can leverage these funds, reinvest them into the facility for these improvements, and enjoy these lower energy costs into the future. So how does this process work? So I work through, I manage the Arkansas Energy Performance Contracting Program. And so what I do is I talk to bodies such as yourselves, give them a little introduction into the EPC. If it is a project, it's something that you wish to pursue, we would then move on to sign a memo of understanding. What this is, is a non-binding agreement that states what your expectations would be for the process. And also tells you what we at the Arkansas Energy Office will be providing you throughout the process. We will help you take a look at your utility bill, see if there's like what your rates are, put those together as long as what your building information, and help you craft a request or proposals. And then through your normal procurement measures, we will announce it to our list of energy service companies that have been pre-qualified through our program. This is to make sure they have a good track record of being able to complete these types of programs, these types of projects within the state. Once this gets announced, if there's any sort of facility walkthroughs, we will help you get those organized and get those scheduled in the event that you can't decide based upon the proposals that you receive that you need to do interviews. We will help you set up those interviews and administer those as well. Once you have the interviews and you found, you know, the person, the company that you wish to partner with in doing an energy performance contract, we would then help you develop the scope. These are the items that's talking about what exactly you're going to be looking at in terms of what's going to be audited for your facilities. If you're going to be looking at HVAC, if you're going to be looking at doing building automation, if you're going to be replacing windows. I've heard of people replacing, you know, the sod on their football field as a water conservation measure. You know, if they can make it make sense, they can make it make sense. So, or, or, you know, the pie in the sky, renewable energy. So we're talking about solar in that, in that regard. Once you develop what that scope is and you start, you develop your, your investment-grade audit contract. Now, at this point, this is when money actually starts becoming a thing. At this point, we're all just talking, we're all just trying to figure out what, you know, the project may be. Once we get into the investment-grade audit and the company that you partnered with actually goes through and they're checking your schedules, they're checking your burn rates, they're checking your utilities, and how much energy that you are using, being able to tell you what can be replaced and then how much that's going to cost. And this is all the pricing is pretty much based upon the square footage of what it is that they will be checking out. At that point, you will have the ability to decide, okay, we want to move on. We want to do an energy performance contract, or we, this is not something that we find feasible at this time or have the appetite for. But at that point, once the investment-grade contract, uh, investment-grade audit has taken place, you would have to pay for that work that was completed by the company. Now, once you have paid for that contract, you can self-perform if you wish to. That's totally an option to you because you now own that investment-grade audit. Or you can proceed on and develop the energy performance contract. So you will select exactly the scope of, based upon your own internal discussions and... So, you will select exactly the scope of, based upon your own internal discussions and feasibility's and, you know, your budget that allows, for what it is you actually wanna have take place, and you negotiate the contract to then move on into the financing and construction of all these energy conservation measures that may implement into your facilities. And then you move into the funding phase of measurement and verification. This is seeing all that work take place, of seeing all those reduce, all the reductions, excuse me, in your utility costs and your maintenance costs by those measures that have been implemented. So.
Who is this contract actually with?
Who is the contract that you're with? It will be between you, the public entity, and the energy service company. That's who the contract will be between. So, one of the big things that's happening right now, uh, across the state is solar. And there's a lot of people who are entering into these energy performance contracts along the normal sort of, we would call our high items as far as LED light retrofits and HVAC, and also like water conservation measures, is taking a look at renewable energies. So, in solar, one of the things that we've seen, uh, recently is that there's been a huge drop in the cost of solar. So, we're saying like, basically since two thousand five up to two thousand twenty, this huge precipitous drop in the costs of, uh, solar costs per watt. So, certain things that are helping that take place is that, you know, solar panels are becoming more efficient. We're also seeing an increased market share of utility companies using solar as well. So, it's just, as more people are using it, things are getting cheaper. In Arkansas, uh, we happen to be in a very advantageous area, uh, for irradiance. And this is how, that's how they measure, um, basically how much sunlight and how much gener- how much you'll be able to like generate per meter. There's a whole like mathematical equation to it. But, uh, Arkansas happens to be in a very good spot, especially in the south southeast, as they go further west for the generation of power in the United States. Um, as of two thousand seventeen, you know, we were a little bit behind. But as things have gotten cheaper and more people have gotten into the market, we've implemented over two hundred fifty megawatts in the state. Over three hundred and fifty billion dollars have been invested in solar alone. And, I mean, if you hadn't had someone come knock on your door already, you know there's a bunch of service, you, solar companies out there now. They're trying to put stuff not only in public facilities, but on your houses as well. So, the business at present is moving. Now, these next couple of slides go into a little bit more about some of the legislation that makes all this possible in the state right now. Um, and it talks about net metering. Um, and that metering is essentially, um, mathematical way of that for every watt that is generated by the solar array, that's like one watt that comes off of your bill. And currently, right now, uh, it's a very advantageous spot for us in Arkansas. It's a one-to-one, so for every watt that comes off, there's one, every watt generated is one watt that comes off. Uh, the unfortunate part of that is, is that it comes back up for reassessment at the end of this year. And we are not exactly sure where the Public Service Commission is going to rule on this. So far, it's been very good news in that the, they denied the, uh, co-op's appeal of net metering rules, but we don't know if it's gonna stay one-to-one, uh, or if they may institute a tariff sort of flat fee that will help cover sort of, uh, the improvement costs of the grid. But it may be changing, it may be not. There's a lot of players who are very interested in solar right now, who, uh, you know, play on Saturdays during s- certain times of the year, that they probably would like behoove them for net metering rules to stay the same. So, if that happened, that would be cool for everybody. So, a lot of ways that this maybe arranges through what is known as a solar services agreement. These are typically a twenty to twenty-five year agreement to where a developer will come, and they will build an array either on land that they would purchase or land that you already have. They will own the array, uh, in doing so, they're able to, uh, capitalize the tax credit that you, isn't an option for you guys cuz you're a tax exempt, uh, they're able to capitalize that tax credit, pass those savings along to you. And they also own, they also maintain the array, which is in their interest to maintain it and keep it working, cuz they need to sell that power back to you. Uh, you still also have the ability at certain times during the contract to buy that array, uh, if you still choose. So, a couple of benefits, yeah, you get to, uh, there's no upfront cost, which is the great thing. You basically get to just enjoy whatever that rate is that is developed by the developer. Um, and oftentimes, it is going to be at a reduced rate, uh, from what your current utility usage is. You also get a plan out of what your rate is going to escalate to, uh, so you're not necessarily at the behest of whatever the co-op or utility company is going to jump your rate up to. You're gonna know that for essentially a twenty-five year stretch.
I have a question on the last slide.
Go ahead.
This says something about we can buy back at market value.
Yes.
Who, who sets that market value, is there?
It's determined within the contract.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's all like, usually there's a seven-year step, so it's like year seven, year fourteen, and year like twenty-one. They'll have it in the contract, they'll want the, the value to be. Okay. So, on the pitfalls, just to be fair, um, the difference between, you know, it's like renting versus owning a house. When you like own it, you get a little bit more of the realization of your high generation. Um, you also get some of the negatives of your low generation times, as opposed, as opposed to it being like a levelized rate with an SSA. Um, you do have to keep in mind what those escalators are of, that what that escalation is going to be over the time of the contracts. It is a long-term commitment of property that you may have, this is what I said, it is a twenty-five year turn, term. Uh, and also, you gotta make sure that you are partnering with a good developer. Now, luckily, a lot of people who are with it, pre-qualified in our program, know what it is that they're doing. So, we have a pretty good standing with that. So, one of our big, uh, most recent, uh, school districts that we managed to do a project with recently, that's in Farmington. Uh, in Farmington, they were able to, uh, implement a one-point-two megawatt array, that they actually broke across like three different arrays, offsetting about ninety percent of their energy usage. Now, in all these, you're probably gonna, that's probably the highest, probably around ninety to maybe like ninety-three percent. No one's ever gonna offset a hundred percent of your usage, cuz they don't want the Huntsville School District to become Huntsville School District Power Company. You know, it's never, cuz that, that's not, the PSC would never let it happen. Um, and then they were able to replace recommissioned two hundred thirty-one HVAC units. They replaced over, uh, sixty-five hundred light fixtures, seven hundred and, excuse me, six hundred and five plumbing fixtures. Uh, one of the great things of the part of program, even with the savings, they were able to take some of that money and create a curriculum. So, for the STEM classes for Farmington, they were able to create this curriculum that they can use in the classes. Uh, overall debt service of this project, uh, about three-point-eight billion dollars. However, the total projected savings after twenty-five years total is six billion, seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, as great as that sounds, they had to do this through conventional financing. They didn't have the opportunity to use the revolving loan lease fund, and this is the, uh, flyer that has been passed out to some of you. Uh, we recently launched this program through the Arkansas Energy Office to help municipalities and school districts take advantage of the, uh, of energy performance contracts. Uh, the main focus of this, of how we're able to do this, is, uh, the total loan amount of up to two-point-five billion dollars per project, uh, is only available to local governments and to school districts. It's a maximum ten-year loan, but we're able to do it at zero-point-four percent interest. Uh, we're basically just covering the cost of ad funds for holding our money. Uh, and another part of this, we make sure that in, for these projects, that we want to have at least to be fifty percent of the savings to be immeasurable electric, water, and gas consumption. So, you know that you're having sustainable, uh, savings throughout the project, that you're just not stipulating that we figure that we're not gonna have to change bowls so many times, so we're spending less money on bowls. We want this to be an actual reduction in your utility, utility usage. So, had, this is an example, not really good to see, to see on this screen, but this was a project not ran through Arkansas Energy Performance Contracting Program. Uh, but it was done with Clarksville, the Clarksville School District, and they were simply doing an LED retrofit. And this is something to where they definitely needed to do it, it's perfectly fine project. Couple of issues with this is that, you see, it goes all the way down to thirty years. In the state of Arkansas, a energy performance contract can't be longer than twenty years unless it has been verified and been checked by our office. So, that is projected to thirty years is already a problem. But if you wanna take, you can't take a look, but I'll tell you right here. So, they're spending about six hundred and four thousand dollars as their, their budget. Their finance amount is about eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. They are projected to break even somewhere around year sixteen, where their cumulative cash flow is about six hundred and thirteen dollars, uh, six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. But even after that, they're spending fifty-three thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-one thousand dollars in debt service to finance this for another four years at two-point-eight-nine percent interest. So, using their assumptions that they use in this project, had they ran this through the Arkansas Energy Performance Contracting Program, they would have been able to finance this for only six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars as opposed to the eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that they ended up spending. And at year twenty, when the project should end, if you, they wanted the project to even go that far, they would have saved nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars as opposed to in year six, in year twenty, they only have seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. In Farmington, as great as that project was for them, they ended up having a debt service of five million, uh, about like five-point-one million dollars. They were very fortunate, they actually were able to do a one-point-two million dollar buy-down of their project. But they still had a five-point-one million dollar debt service. Had they been able to do the RLOF, cuz it just wasn't around in time for them, their debt service was only the four-point-three million dollars. They would have had an additional seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars on hand. But it could have been increased the scope, it could have been done more work, or that's funds that can fund just about anything. I don't know if it's like another position, I don't know what it would possibly be for their school district. Hope School District, this is a project that happened before Farmington, same sort of instance. Had they had the ability to use the RLOF, they would have saved themselves an additional five hundred thousand dollars over the course of their project. Um, so, just having these numbers on hand, and that's one of the good things about doing the projects through the Arkansas Energy Office, that we are able to see these projects, to judge them, the one to, as apples to apples as you can possibly get them, to know what is going to be a good project and what's not going to be like a good project. And seeing that and making now this funding opportunity available, we just see there's a lot of opportunity there to where, you know, in the end of the day, we want to make these facilities better, cuz we want them to be longer lasting. We want them to be better workplaces for our staff, for our students. But we also are wanting to like save money. And so, finding ways to help us do that, you know, that's part of why I'm doing this. And it's one of the better tools that we were able to use the funds that we had on hand as a state to then make it available to you guys at zero-point-four percent to do projects such as these, uh, should there be a need. So. That is the end of my talk, so if there's any questions or anything like that, I'd be happy to take them.
Um, this guy with Madison County Solar.
Say that again, ma'am?
There. Uh, Madison County is rec- decided to go solar in, do a solar project, is that with this?
Yes, the Madison County project was through the Arkansas Energy Performance Contracting Program. Unfortunately, they decided not to use the, uh, RLOF. Um, they, because it is a ten-year loan, there's, it, that is a higher payback in the initial part of the loan. Um, so they felt it better for it to be budget neutral the entire way through for every year. So, they opted not to use the RLOF for that, but they did run their project through the, the Arkansas Energy Performance Contracting Program as well as the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Water Department, uh, the project that they are doing, uh, for solar. That was through the A B C program as well.
How many arrays would we have to have for our buildings here, and then we also have St. Paul?
I can't give you that, no problem. No, oh, man, if I, I mean, if I knew, if I could do that, I, I wouldn't be working here. No, um, that would be a conversation that we would have to have, I would have to like, we would have to take a look at your utilities, know how much it is you guys are pulling, to kind of be able to judge, uh, what size array that you would possibly, possibly need. Yeah. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm totally happy to have that conversation with you.
Scroll, scroll back down to that last. So, if I'm, we'll say this much this year, and then that total amount the next year, or is it just add up to that amount through the years?
Oh, the cumulative?
Right.
That is, yeah, that's adding up all of the, the subsequent years, yes.
Okay.
So, that's potentially what is, again, now, I would say that Clarksville was not ran through our, uh, our program. And there's even more issues than like in, in this, in this talk that I would like get into. There's a lot of like assumptions as far as like their, how much their utility savings is increasing over a year that we would take issue with, and that's one of the benefits of working with the Arkansas Energy Office, is that we're able to take, we would have been able to take a look at this project, and be like, this part doesn't make sense, like, where is your back paying for these findings that you have, or can you change your escalation rates like to this? Uh, cuz I mean, ultimately, an energy performance contract needs to be budget neutral. It's great when you have excess savings. These savings and LED lights are some of the low-hanging fruit, that's why so many people are gonna do them, it's one of the easier things to do. Uh, but when you don't have someone being your buyer's agent, which is what we do in these situations, you kind of get shoddy programs like this, that aren't made as well as what they potentially should be. So, there's a lot of built-in assumptions into this and high, like escalations that they basically built themselves in a lot of like, a wide range of safety, so if they mess up, they don't, it doesn't, it won't look so bad. So, yeah, that's kind of what was going on. But unfortunately, they came to us too late with that information.
Yeah.
Before we were able to.
We get calls all the time, or I do, uh, being in maintenance, end of it, uh, wanting to come and present like what you're doing.
Yeah.
Different, I'm not gonna name names, but five or six different ones that call me once a month.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that, you know, probably all five are people who are pre-qualified through our program. So, that, and I don't necessarily necessarily want to like say that one is any like better than the other, but when you're talking with one person and they're able to then like, like, they may be able to present you with a good deal, but let's say like, what everyone else with the same information will be able to present you as well. You may still go with that first person that you had a good relationship with, they presented it to you guys. But being able to see what else other people have in store and other means by which they've developed these projects, there may be something to where either the people who presented to you before step up their game, or you find a better person to partner with, the more aligned the lines, the more alliance with, uh, how do you guys do business? So, that's being, you know, instead of having to deal with just one person, you get to divi- deal with others, like eighteen people, so. That's one of the benefits of also, you know, we go directly to them and say like, hey, Huntsville's thinking about doing a project, and they know to respond to it.
The school districts typically have one person that kind of heads this, this up?
As far as.
Like on a RN team to, you know, kind of facilitate.
Okay.
Anything happening.
Well, yeah, there will usually be a center point of like contact that I, I will deal with, and who will get, uh, correspondence from the ESCO, the energy service companies, ESCOs that will like respond. However, you will have to, the school district would need to form a selection committee to, will need to like review those proposals that get sent in, to then be able to make a decision on who you want to partner with. But yeah, usually there's like this one point of contact that I, I'll talk to, that will disseminate information, and then you have your own internal, uh, selection committee or metrics by how you. And then you have your own internal uh, selection committee or metrics by how you guys decide on making that decision that you would do.
What happens at the end of twenty years?
At the end of twenty years?
Once we pay it, our portion off. Are we receiving the benefits from it, or do we have to reevaluate and get another contract?
At the end of twenty years, you're, I mean, the, the contract is over and you will probably, if you're still saving money, if the. Let's say just, well. You would hope that if you get like a new water heater, you hope that your water heater is working the same way at like the end of twenty years. Odds are probably not, you'll probably have to reassess, there'll probably be even new better technology in that time to then re, to reassess. Then you do another guaranteed contract where if I do this replacement, I need you to guarantee me that I'm still gonna, I'm gonna be saving enough to cover the cost of that. Another good thing too, uh, with our program per like the state law, um, you're able to like do multiple phases. You don't have to do everything at one time if you don't want to. So you can extend the contract up to seven years to do multiple phases of the project if you so choose to, so.
Mr. Warren, were you able to talk with the county and see if we can piggyback on their project?
I have not talked with the county yet, I've talked with uh, Mr. Herman first. Just to see what the steps were that were involved and then I was going forward with that after that, after that conversation. And I thought that he probably should come up here and he was very willing to come up here and just lay out some information for us. Uh, to be able to say, yeah, Mr. Warren, go ahead, or, or, you know, or just give you information in general.
Okay.
Anything else for you guys?
So I just want to make sure you're staying completely.
Okay.
So it's a twenty year contract and basically everything we're saving goes to the energy company?
No, no, so.
To a certain extent, right?
Well, okay, so you have this finance payment in this, in this sense, so that is what it is if you are paying. Because you're paying it back for whatever works that took place. Now, in this scenario, um, in this Clark, in this Clarksville scenario, had they used the A P C program. And they had to use the revolving loan fund, which can supplement other forms of financing. So you don't have to just use that if you have other financing available to you. They, you're done paying after year ten, and so your savings is just, this is retained savings by you.
So after ten years, we've got extra money to do.
Yeah.
Projects potentially.
Yeah, potentially, yeah, you could reevaluate and something else from you.
How fragile are them solar panels?
Uh, they do something called like a hail test where they like shoot that thing like it's out of a gun. So they, they can take a lot of damage, they're, yeah, they're pretty durable. And you don't have to worry about, uh, what's it, recycling them, there are companies that do recycling the solar panels. And in thirty years, when your solar panels actually probably do need to get recycled, there'll probably be more companies and we probably won't be here. So, um, um, that's not a worry as far as like what happens to the panels afterwards.
Well, we have some pretty good storms and stuff, so I'm just curious on how durable they were.
But then again, too, if you're doing S S A where it is on the developer, the developer's going to have to replace it, you wouldn't have to worry about it.
For the life of the contract.
I'm guessing, you know, they, they have, you know, the people that come in and actually do an installation. They all use different brands of things, so like warranty and stuff would be per whoever comes in and does it, who they use as far as material wise, I'm guessing.
Yes, but, well, a lot of times, when people have their preferred, uh, obviously they're going to have a preferred contract that they work with, they're going to prefer materials that they, that they work with. However, if there's something to where uh, you are particular, or you want them to use something else, no one's going to tell you no. They're going to use whatever it is that they want, you would want them to use. But generally, they're going to probably want to use things that's going to give you the best service at like a reasonable like price that they can readily get within like the construction time, so.
Man, I definitely think it's something that we need to talk with the county more before we, we do any kind of.
Yeah.
A word I was not asking for us to.
Oh, yeah, 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 this is, yeah, this is just information.
I would just sign in on that.
How long is the process from the top, if we tell you, yes, we want to look into this, what is the start? To get it installed and it's starting?
Uh, I've seen projects that have taken place in like three weeks in terms of like from us releasing a R P to like a person being selected. Again, it takes about, depending on what they're taking a look at for the audit, that can take anywhere from thirty to like ninety days. And then whatever they're constructing is their construction time, so. It's, I mean, we're taking, we're taking, we're talking, we're talking on like uh, anywhere from like. Like four to six months.
Say, when was the last time we did any kind of lighting upgrades?
We did this, we did this building just to chase it all the L D in the house. Just to see what our energy savings is and we haven't got a year's worth of data yet, but we are saving quite a bit of money just for this building. We, as far as a full blown audit, we haven't done that in several years, since before I started.
That's definitely something.
I mean, that, I mean, you look at cost savings, that's, that is the biggest cost saving that you can.
Does not get any cheaper.
I mean, you take, you know, just regular trotters, I mean, they're drawing six or seven amps a piece and then you take a L D that's drawing one point two, it adds up.
I will, just so you know, yeah, thank you, Mr. Herman, I will contact the county, but I will also be in contact with Mr. Herman to.
So like if he calls you to do an audit.
Hey, yours.
How long does it take to get that audit done? I mean, say, two weeks from now or next morning, we say, hey, we want you to come in there and do that audit. Do we come there and say, this is what we need to do, I mean, is that something that happens fairly quick or is it something pretty intense?
It's pretty, yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty intense.
I figured it was, I've got hope for him, so I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, it'll take like a little bit of time, um, but yeah, these are conversations that like we could probably, I'm not, not to like this way, like. These are kind of like offline conversations that like, we all want to be on like one big email to like talk about it, we can certainly do. To talk a little bit more like the nitty gritty of the details. All right. Is anything else? Thank you guys again for having me up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No, we appreciate it.
So I just, I will, you know, I'll talk with the county, but I will, I will, I will also talk with Mr. Herman as well, see what, how they call it and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, C R Crawford is up next on our debate. We have Ken Ernest and Oda. You guys ready for this?
I am ready, how's everybody doing this evening?
Doing well, how are you, Mike?
Guys, enjoying walking through the building, I saw?
Looking good.
Good. Well, as you guys saw, we did complete our nailing on the floors this past weekend, um, we're going to move right into ceiling, those gym floors. So you guys will see that coming together from the stain, the paint, ceiling, all that kind of stuff, so. It's getting really bright enough at gymnasium, um, a lot of flooring got completed last week, we're going to wrap up on that. Uh, over the next couple of weeks, anything with millwork, um, and final paint and stuff, so we're going to start pushing this thing out fairly quickly. Um, we are still sticking to our October date, end of October. So over the next couple of weeks, just kind of keep popping your head in, you guys will slowly see this thing turn around. Like I said, a lot of the flooring is going to really bring this thing together, so we're really excited for it.
That's good, guys have a great job on it.
It's hard to believe that, you know, exactly twelve months ago, we were reporting, so it's moving along very well.
If anybody studying building knows, the finish work is the slow part.
Yes, sometimes it could be like starting an old record player, once you get going, it gets going.
How's the supply chain looking for you?
Well, we, we ran into our fair share of issues, uh, logistics and material shortages across the nation kind of hit us, but we, we worked through it. We just did what we could in the areas that we could and we pushed right along. One of the big deals was our roofing materials, we had substantial shortage on some of those materials, but like I said, we pushed in the areas we could and kept going, so.
So it's a done good job for you?
Yeah. Been enjoyed, been, been a fun job so far.
I do have videos that they send us as well that we can watch.
Stop by anytime you guys like.
Okay, wish you luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Hey, Ms. McCollum, and the annual bullying report?
Um, I, every year we're required by the state to report to their board how many bullying reports we had. That doesn't mean that it was a prison instance, but it was a complaint that uh, was filed, we had twenty-two this past school year. The way that they can do that is they can approach their principals or their administrators. Most of them are submitted online on our website, there's an anonymous way to report bullying incident, or they can do it by filling in all that information. So once that is submitted, it gets sent to me and then I will delegate it out to that school principal, which there is a set part, a set form of way to do that investigation. And, and then it's uh, dealt with in-house, so that was our report for last year, it was twenty-two incidents reported.
How many of them was found positive?
Um, I don't have that with me right now, I can report back to you for that, but I, I would not say all of them. I'd probably say if I was just saying it off the top of my head, fifty percent. We had, you know, we would have some that would just put something on there that didn't have anything, it wouldn't even be a true student, so that's included in that.
Absolutely.
So I'd, I'd probably say about fifty percent were dealt with in-house, following the policy in our handbooks.
Update on bus routes?
Uh, the good news, St. Paul has caught up now, we're good down there, uh, we're still about four short up here. What I've got worked out right now, we're going to have to have two routes kind of combined, out twenty-three south, it'll probably affect. Twenty-five, thirty families kind of running snow routes, basically what I have to do to start. Unless, kind of today, I've got a driver who didn't drive last year, she's kind of come back willing to help if we can get her going. Day one, um, we might not have to do that, but I don't want to jump the guns, I'm going to try to get up, some parents would have been calling. I'm going to try to get ahold of every single one of them and just lay it out for them tomorrow, here's worst case scenario, maybe we'll be all right. Uh, we got another route out around uh, momentum mountain, we've kind of split up over three different routes, so just kind of got lucky. We had a route through closer out there, out twenty-three south, we're a little more spread out, uh, not as much where we do. Uh, we do have a couple right now that are in their written, written test phase, so I feel good about a couple up here that are good hires. We've got probably four or five more that have shown interest. It's just a long process to get your license now, uh, some of it here, they kind of lose interest when you have to train for a month for a part-time job, it's kind of, kind of rough. After we're red.
Is there a, a time limit that students are supposed to be on the bus from the time they get on, do they get to schools and they?
There's not, they tried to test that whole eight, ten years ago, but it never got anywhere, they were looking, shooting for forty-five minutes, which I don't know what we do.
A lot of, a lot of buses used to get pretty close to each other's route, is that some of them you're going to be able to combine, but where they kind of backtrack over each other night and day?
Kind of pull about five, six, eight kids off of this route, push them over the route without beside them.
It's used to, you know, we'd have seventy kids a day on the bus in the brush rounds, I've got on the bus at six oh five in the morning, I got to school at five minutes late, the school starts today.
Well, when we go back, we, we don't pick them up before six and we try to get everybody delivered before five. It's our goal, which if we ever get over to one of those, we'll move into another bus, figure something out, but.
But I mean, that's, that's, that's our goal, but that's not a step.
There's no plan to take that.
We have to, some of them just going to have to get up early or something, so we can get, get to where we need to be, okay.
He was getting done a very good job of mapping this out and, uh. Have the families that you've talked to about the snow route, they've been pretty receptive to it, understanding about what's going on?
Yeah, I get kind of get both, one thought they might go home school for a while until we got it sorted out, but uh, most, most have been understanding.
I mean, it's a tough situation, I mean, I'm also, I'm a parent's point of view, but also it's from the school district point of view, trying to hire people, I mean, it's, it's tough right now. It's not just the school district, it's, it's everywhere, it's not just us, it's all over the U S, it's, it's tough.
And one, one big thing I should have mentioned, I think I did last time, it's going to be all hands on deck, that's every mechanic I've got, that's me, that's our office area, we're all going to be driving. So we're going to not have any subs for a while, I mean, we'll try to let families know as early as we can. Hey, someone's got a doctor for me next Thursday, that bus, if we can, that bus may not run that afternoon. We'll put it out there as early as best we can.
Good job, because that's, you got a tough job.
So what do you, what are you going to do, like, we're going to have to get a teacher or principal to sit with that busload of kids?
Yeah.
Until somebody gets in, if y'all are all running routes?
Yeah, if they, somebody just cannot get to their kid, uh, once a route gets empty, we might be able to get a few of them home after four. Four is about as earliest that somebody would be off a route.
Right, that's why I've been used to it.
Yeah, and we still have the two town routes we can pull from, which is what we'll try to do most of it we can, where they can. Take town kids home, it's a little early, hour early or something, where they can go and run another route later that day.
Well, it's, looks better than it did last time you made the.
Yeah, we're, we're getting a little better.
Well, great.
For what the bus drivers will.
Any onions that thinks the bus driver's job's easy, go drive one. I promise you, I bet.
We'll catch you ever something.
Okay, next, next item is the district comparison financial report. As was noted, uh, I'm talking with Mr. Comer, you know, our, our July revenue from the county was, was really low. But we've had uh, higher revenue in the pay, that was not typical and. You know, it, it just kind of ebbs and flows, it's not like it's a consistent every month you can count on this, it's not a salary, I guess. Goes with what collections are, so, and what they turn into us, so just wanted to point that out in that, in that aspect of.
I see that you did say that, um, there was a deposit on the first, so it's not.
Yes.
Not as low as what we.
Yes, for some reason our tax money came in late in the month, I have no idea why. And then Shannon, who receives that in, was on vacation the last week of the month, so. So it came in during that time, she received it in on August first, so it'll be on next month, but, but it is, you know, we did get it this month. And that's in three hundred thousand plus, so, so it's about where we, we would normally be.
So on expenditures, are we, are we done paying legal fees now? Uh, I don't, I don't think so just yet, I'd have to double check on that and I know that's one of the discussions that we want to have.
Well, he sent out the email the other day, the twenty-fifth.
Right.
Was supposed to be the file in the federal bill, right? If they, if they agree and they should wrap up, wrap up what he's in the middle of right now, okay.
But we always have some legal fees, correct, since we can give them a retainer.
There were, I mean, even, so, I mean, we can go ahead and have that discussion now if you want to, if you want me to pursue somebody else. If you want me to pursue somebody else's potential legal services, then, and that's all I need is to hear that.
Absolutely, I was not impressed with our.
But what I, what I would say is that we will finalize this M first, and then.
Oh, well, yeah, absolutely. I just didn't know, I know we have, you know, retainers and this.
We, we have district budgets for, uh.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Warren, I'm sorry, it's cutting it down, so I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, are we talking about the court date on the twenty-fourth or whatever this month? Yep?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I told him I wouldn't be able to be there because I thought we all had said we were supposed to come. He said that the plaintiff, that, that's different than the September meeting. The September meeting, according to what he told me, was still, in the email, would still happen.
Okay.
And this is where plaintiff is going to speak, so we might be getting a little ahead of ourselves.
I have some more.
I'm sorry, I can't.
No, that's, that's fine. We, we didn't, we didn't say much.
Okay, so, that's why I just wanted to know if we were getting ahead of ourselves, because we still have September.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. The district financial comparison, anything on that? So, I did want to bring up our ESTR funding, uh, you know, and I put it as an issue. If you haven't seen the state legislator that, in July, actually, July twenty-first, the Legislative Council, uh, basically came out and said, well, you know, you can use this money to fund teacher raises, and here's how much you, every district should give, and here's how much they should get certified, and here's how much they should get classified. And that kind of, and if you really want to go back, it started when the governor said, hey, we need to raise funds to this. That's when all of this kind of fighting, is the best way to put it, sorry, it, uh, happened and started, started up. That legislative committee, uh, they meet once a month. They, they basically froze those funds at that point. And we have had to go back and, uh, through our, through commissioners' memos and waiting for them to, you know, give us some guidance, we finally got some last week. We have had to resubmit our plans so that they can see what we were going to use that for, what we were going to do with it, or we had the opportunity to change those plans if they wanted us to, to be more accommodating to the potential of having a teacher salary ready, or a teacher bonus. Um, we, we were already giving retention and recruitment bonuses last year and this year, and then that gets into the whole another thing of, are they going to count that money that we've already given or not? And so, it's kind of a hot mess to some extent.
Will we have clarification now?
No. Legislators start, started meeting today, and, you know, we hope that we will have clarification. You know, that's, that's, I joke with, a lot of people hope it's not a plan, but that's what, that's where we are. The legislature meets, they have, and this committee or this, this legislative council meets every month. Um, what, what we did is we resubmitted our plan, and we will wait to find out what they say about that plan. Feel like we're in a pretty good position, honestly. We didn't make blanket, uh, we didn't give out money that blanket, you know, was, uh, across the board, but we did it for people who qualified based on the recommendations and the things that we could, that we knew were allowable in that ESTR funding from the federal government. You know, what, what the State Legislature Committee did was against, honestly, was against what the federal government and the guidelines for ESTR funding and AARP funding that was set out to us. So, and the other part of it is that not every district got the same amount, so, of ESTR funding. So, you have districts who now have this mandate of the teacher bonuses that didn't get that much money to begin with to be able to do that. So, uh, we've, at our, at our district, we've stopped, it basically, it really affected three different things. It affects the teacher retention pay that's going to come out in August. It affects the heat and air that we got approved, and it affects some busing purchases that we had made a long time ago but hadn't come in yet. So, we've basically.
That was my next question, was the, the heat and air and the buses?
Yeah, we've, we've had to stop and say, you know, we, we have to, our money's been frozen on this account. I'm not willing to go and run a negative, because what happens is, we spend that money, it runs negative, they reimburse us, you know, once a month or every two weeks, something like that, based off of our receipts, basically. And I'm not willing to, to take that chance.
Good.
One point two million dollars for a heat and air, and I want to do it. It's not about a want to do it or not, or, you know, five buses that cost a hundred and fifty thousand, not a hundred and twenty thousand dollars each. The, the one that's touchiest is our recruitment and retention, and that's supposed to happen in August. And if we don't get unfrozen from that fund, then I'm not going to be able to do that this month. I will do it as soon as I, as we can. Uh, we will work our hardest with the federal programs. I keep looking at Natasha, she's been on top of this as well. You know, we want to pay our, we want to pay that out to our people. We keep that guideline in place as, or adjust it if we are forced to, but that's where we are. It's been frozen from the state level, and till we get more comfortable news from them, I'm not willing to run the deficit that it would take for us to have to do it.
Absolutely.
So, I, I hate to deliver that bad news, especially on the recruitment and retention, because that affects everybody. But that is where we are right now.
Principals, I mean, you guys all, uh, were planning on using it to buy school supplies for them, correct? Were you guys able to do that? Do you guys feel like it would be a good budget?
Yeah, we got, we got them.
I have supplies then, I don't know if you guys.
With the huge.
You can place the orders.
We have, we've stopped these major, major purchases. The, the smaller ones, like, you know, there, there were some heat and air things that we fixed that were going to be purchased out of that, and I went ahead and located. But these major things are the ones that we have stopped, that are going to cost a lot, a lot, a lot. And, you know, it could be tomorrow that we get guidance saying, you can go ahead and do it. It may have happened tonight, you know, legislators meeting right, well, not right now, but they meant to that, it started today. But, you know, this is, this is something that every district is facing right now, and, you know, some of them are taking chances and running negatives and just encumbering that expense, and some of them are not, and some of them don't even have the ability. You know, you've got Northwest Arkansas districts that are in different places. Springdale's able to do one thing, West Forks didn't even get enough money to cover what the legislators suggested for their classified staff. So, you know, it's just, it's all over and kind of trying to figure out as we go.
So, where does that put us with the buses? I mean, is it, it's not like a start all over?
Well, I hope not, because we worked them last September.
Well, that's what I, I mean, I mean, if we're, we're kind of putting a halt to it now, are we just gonna have to wait another year to get them, or?
We haven't got that far yet. I haven't really, I'm hoping it all works itself out, I'm probably just thinking, but, uh.
No, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from, I just, that was just one of the questions that I, I kind of had with.
They'll, they'll be ready, they'll have our name on them already when they get here. I mean, I'm sure they can resell them like that, but.
Right.
Hopefully.
We don't want to get that.
No, yeah, if we, if we lost these, it would probably be at least another year before we.
It's tough.
Yeah, it's tough. That's not to go, but that's, I just wanted to give you all that day. Oh, I know, I know.
Have we talked to Bohan and let him know kind of where we're at, and not just leave him how he is?
Yes.
So, did he have, he didn't have the stuff on order yet, did he?
No, uh, he has been so busy because of the heat wave, uh, that he actually, he hadn't had time, so it all worked out really good.
Take us out.
We assured him that as soon as we got, as soon as we got direction where we could, we would let him know just as soon as possible, so.
Good.
Well, it sounds like you guys are on top of it, so.
We're trying to be, and, you know, I would say everybody that's, that's involved in it has been on top of it. It's great, it's hard news to take, it's tough to swallow at this point, but, uh, but it's what we have to do right now.
It's tough.
If there are any other questions about that, we'll go on to admin reports, and we won't read through each one of them, but, you know, unless you had a question or something you wanted to talk about in the admin reports, each month, you know, we'll just ask them to fill out what the highlights are, although the open house is this week, it's Thursday. It's been noted on a lot of principals' pages, uh, school starts on Monday, kids are coming.
So, the bus cameras will come and have an SRT, is that still?
I think those were okay, but I'm not sure, right? I haven't, that's one process.
Uh, they're, they're supposed to be seeing what they can do to put a hold on it. I mean, they'd already ordered the equipment, but obviously it's not been delivered or installed yet. On these admin reports, I know in the past, this has been where a lot of the, the good highlights have happened. I don't, I know, we, we started kind of doing them a little bit differently by putting them on paper, but I don't want to take away from the good highlights that we have in our school district. Uh, that's just reading them and everybody not being able to.
Right, that's fine.
I mean, there's a lot of people that are watching online and stuff that don't know what we're looking at, that I would really like for them to be able to, to do, if, uh, everybody's good with that.
Jennifer, I want for you to tell us about the RAS. Yeah, yeah. Well, I was a little disappointed with my red carpet, I'm like, wow. Um, so, we went down to Hot Springs, um, July twelfth.
Wednesday, yeah.
Twelfth or thirteenth, um, we went down to Hot Springs and, um, was presented our award, um, by Sandy Shepherd. She is, um, the rise guru for the state, as well as, um, Commissioner Keys. Man, I wish I would have known that I was going to talk about this, I would have brought a whole bunch of stuff to say, but we're just proud. No, I'm, I'm thankful, because I agree, I feel like that's something that, um, I like for the public to hear. So, um, hopefully you were able to see the blurb on Facebook and just some of the quotes that she was, um, that she spoke about her visit to our school and the things that she noticed, and just really bragged on the quality of education, the instruction that she saw taking place, didn't matter whether she was in a general education classroom or special education classroom, it was consistent. So, um, it was just a celebration of the hard work that our teachers do every single day, and it was just a proud, proud mama moment for me. I want a big banner for our yard and a big trophy case with laser beams, and I'm just, I'm proud of it, so.
We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything?
You got your own break, about?
I just, I just want to say, um, today was, was a really good day, and that never gets old. The first day that teachers are back, and it's the excitement on their faces, and, um, it just really gets everybody fired up, so.
It's great. I just don't think we, uh, we take the time to, you know, see all the good things that are happening in our district, and, and this is a good way to do that, so, we appreciate you guys. We appreciate all the teachers, just great things happening here, so.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll go on to the new business. So, we have approval of building handbooks, it's on our, first thing on our agenda. You know, I did not print off for your packet the handbooks, I apologize, but each one of them is about a hundred pages.
I've had one, it's two of them.
That's correct, but it includes policies and things like that, so, uh, we will, we will work on a, on a system for next, next year that, that maybe will help let you see what changes have taken place in the actual procedures and stuff like that. We'll, we'll make that a little bit clearer instead of just additional handling to you. But, uh, each year, you know, the, they, each building has committees that, that go through these handbooks. They, uh, they adjust them as they need to, they add the policies and changes that are, that are needed from, based off of what we do in June or July, and model policies that are recommended for them to be paid. So, uh.
These committees are they pretty well the same every year, is it new members every year, or how, how does that work?
It is, it changes sometimes.
Does it?
Next year will change totally, because we have new faculty at the high school.
I was wondering, I mean, new thoughts and insight and stuff usually, instead of the same old, same old, you know?
And we kind of gather, uh, throughout the year, a teacher will say something, a parent will bring up something, so we make mental note, or, no, not mental note, but we write it down somewhere. So, we have all of that, and we, we attempt to incorporate that in, if it's a legal and best policy for, for kids.
That's great.
Why is these rules and these handbooks are written by basically the principals and their committee for each campus, right?
Yes, they have.
So, now, based on the previous things that have went on at this school, we're gonna have to hold people accountable, which we gotta hold Mr. Warren accountable for holding y'all accountable, to enforce these rules straight across the board. No matter what their name is, no matter who their mommy and daddy is, they're gonna have to be enforced fairly and strictly to everybody. And we gotta hold Mr. Warren accountable for this, because he's the only one we got the authority over, but he's got the authority over y'all. So, we're going, if you're going, they don't even have the rules, they're not going to enforce them. They're absolutely worthless if they're not enforced. So, we're going, we're gonna have to, I mean, you know, kids gotta have fun, but they still gotta have rules too. So, by being said, I'm done.
All right, so, can I get a motion to approve the policies?
I'll sign it.
All right, all in favor?
Okay, we have, uh, and Ms. West, if you want to speak to this as well, you can, but we have, uh, school-level approval plans that we have to submit, um, to the state, and we actually, uh, support group. That is in your packet. Each one has a goal, um, based off of the assessment and.
Maybe revisit these throughout the year, these are fluid documents, so it's not that it has to remain the same all year long. As they complete one goal in the building, then they're going to go ahead and add another goal. It isn't just like, oh, you know, check that one off the list, we're done. Um, and this is just continual improvement based off of best practices.
So, principals, do you guys like the map testing system and the star reading assessment? Like, honestly, honestly, is this something that you like, or maybe you're looking at something else?
I like smiles.
I think it's changed if y'all don't figure it out. If you don't like something, or if it's not working, it shouldn't work.
I would speak to say too, it's a little bit different. Um, maps is, we have three choices on our state accountability assessment. It has to be online. Um, maps, NWA, NWEA, excuse me, maps is one, iStation, which we've used, um, in the past, and then the star assessment, couldn't tell you a whole lot about what that looks like in a K-two level. Um, I mentioned that previously we've used iStation. It, the platform itself is more kid-friendly for the little guys as far as what they see on the screen. The reason we elected to change over to NWEA maps is that that's what they use three through ten, and so it was really difficult to see where we were missing K-two, you know, whenever they're, we're looking at two different types of assessments. Um, I will say what's difficult about that for us is that it's normed against peers of whoever's doing the maps, um, across the nation. And so, um, it's a little bit different than some of the more criterion-based tests that we say, okay, here's a skill that you need to master. It's an assessment that grows with them, so, um, one student may see a test differently than another student in the same classroom. So, I don't know, I have, there's pros and cons, I guess, to it, so.
We over-assess students.
Yes.
Year after year, and so, the prior, we, we use, we use math in the, in the intermediate school, but we don't really use the data a lot, to be honest. We use more of our, our, um, reading curriculum and math curriculum as assessments that are in there that we feel more vital to our, what we're doing on a daily basis.
Um, and at the end of the year, we give the ACT Aspire, it's really, we want some really good scores. So, we give the ACT Aspire assessment, then we give MAPS afterwards. So, by that time, the kids are burned out, they don't even care what they put on the paper.
I agree about over assessing.
We do, yes ma'am, we do.
It's not best practices, it's not militarily appropriate.
So, yes ma'am.
I will say, and I feel like I'm speaking for Randy, but, um, at the middle school level, we do use that data constantly um, for MAPS tests and, uh, and even the STAR, you had mentioned that, we, we use both of those quite a bit at the middle school level, so.
The STAR test, I feel like, in my experience, uh, we had, this was a few second graders that may score for their fifth grade reading level. I mean, it's just not accurate. Then you have kids that don't try, so then their reading level's lower. It's, I just don't feel like it's a true grading. It's just my opinion of it.
But we're required to give a reading level report part, so we have to have some kind of assessment to give the parents the data that's required by the state.
And there's just not a better option.
Right.
Coming from another district, I'll tell you, the MAPS is very good, you know, and, and something that is widely used across the state. And so it, it gives you, it's got a lot of tools, which is nice. And as Matt mentioned, it, it has been used a lot, I've already seen in my time here quite a bit of data from it. I'm like Kayla, I, I question the STAR, but it does give us something that we can use with parents. You got, has some talking points there.
The high school level, we don't use STAR, but we do, uh, use our essential standards. And we do use the MAPS as a, as a starting, starting point. We look more at the essential standards, but we still. I do think it's a good idea to give assessments so the kids will know what to expect. Because if you put a kid in there that's not had any practice, um, because it's done on the computer, if they don't know how and it's mimic, that test mimics the real thing. So, I feel that putting them in a cold is, is a detriment to the kid. So I do think that, uh, using that to train them how to take the tests and, and the buttons to push and what not to push is beneficial. So I, I feel that there needs to be something, otherwise they're not going to know how to, how to navigate it and, and do that, so.
APP is the one that is good, other than ACT Aspire, which will, this will be the last year for that. That's the state assessment. Next year we'll, we'll change over to, the company is Cambridge, although we have the actual test name just yet. I don't remember what they call it. But it's, that is the one that kind of follows the kid, like the data follows the kid all the way through, um, so far, right? So, that is another reason for.
Do you think tests are supposed to be more accurate than the ACT Aspire? I think it's pretty well hated across all school districts everywhere.
Uh, I, I mean, I, the, the goal of the committee that selected it or that recommended the, the request for proposal, that was their goal, is to make it as accurate and as user friendly as possible. This company is also the one that the, uh, the ESL, uh, uses, uh, that branch of it. It's one of those things, you don't know until you get the test. You see what, what they're, what they're doing, what they're assessing and how you can break down that data. So, I don't want to say that it's unknown, but it's, yes, sort of.
What are the results of these tests used for? I'm, I'm old school, this is like over my head.
You make, you make daily decisions about what you're going to teach according to data and how you're going to, uh, where you want to plug in holes with students.
Okay, so you're teaching them to take a test or you're teaching them to learn and think for themselves? I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude or be a butt head, but I'm, I'm, I'm lost here.
Now, we have standards and you're, you have to teach to the standards that the state is assessing.
Okay.
So we're teaching to those standards and we're assessing those standards to see if they've mastered this, that standard. Whether it's math or literacy or science.
That cleared up what I needed to know, thank you.
There's a specific, we have a specific time at the, at the intermediate school. We have a block of time designated in third, fourth and fifth where we specifically target those skills for that student and they're on their level. So we, we, we have like twelve to fourteen people, adults, designated. We can send six to eight kids to those specific people and plug in those holes. So then when we do tier one teaching, which is the overall teaching that, that the kids more apt to know what's going on in the classroom.
You cleared me up a bunch, thanks.
Come down, I'm budgeting.
Over my head, dude.
We'll teach you.
Need to be assessed.
You can split a group.
I will put you in a group.
All in the house. And now.
All right, we need to approve these goals.
We entertain a motion for approval of the school level.
We get a motion? Second, all in favor?
Okay, approval of federal program assurances. This is a annual thing that we have to do, uh, basically this is saying that we will follow the rules that are applicable for being able to use these, uh, these funds. State does, so forth, sorry, I shouldn't say that. Uh, but each, you know, each one is a little bit different. They're all entitled funding or federal funds that we have to follow the regulations to be able to get them. And then you're spending, this is basically saying that we're going to follow you. Did I say that correctly?
I'll make a motion.
Steve, say it again. All in favor?
Okay. Uh, back to, once again, the approval for child nutrition prices. We have this even played into the, the ESTR funding freeze that we had. Uh, you know, we had hoped that we'd be able to find a way to do it, but we just can't. We have to make a recommendation to approve the prices as you see here for our next school year. These prices will then go into our handbooks that you approved.
They're pretty well aligned with the, with other people in our district.
And, yeah, our regions.
Some of them, I mean.
Thank you for working so hard on this, trying to figure out a way that, we appreciate you.
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the increase?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Uh, the next item is a request for proposal of banking and treasury services. And I want to start off by saying that this is not, uh, this is not, uh, something against Arvest. I don't want that to, to come across this way. I just feel like our, you know, interest rates are going to fluctuate a little bit, especially now, uh, for banking services. And, um, we are, we've been happy with our best services that they provide, but their interest rate is very, very low. And I just feel like it's a good time to kind of put a request out there, especially with all the banks that we have here in town, to see if, if anybody wants to, you know, make a competitive bid on that.
Will we be keeping this in town?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the request proposal. They'd have to, they'd have to have an entity here. Um, the only thing on that proposal that I will probably change would be the dates of when we, uh, this timeline. You know, the timeline was to, so, accept it through September, if I remember right. You know, have sealed bids and through September sixth, might make that a little bit longer. Uh, you know, the actual, you know, banking request was from October through June of twenty twenty six. Might adjust that to be like January of twenty three instead of October, just to give ourselves some more time to look at.
I think we skipped over the construction, so.
I did, I'm sorry.
Don't want to miss that.
We'll go back to it as soon as we, as soon as we do this.
I didn't want us to miss that.
I appreciate that, I'm sorry. And, and honestly, if nobody is interested, you know, if we go out and there's not a better deal or if there's not, or we don't feel comfortable with it, then we don't, it's, it's no, there's no recommendation to make.
Who will handle this?
Much to Mrs. Schaff's advantage, because it is kind of a headache on our end to, to try and do something like this. But if it, if it helps the district in finances, then we're going to pursue it.
Two percent, that's not a really good point in.
Exactly, yeah.
So, but I guess we just need to vote on it if it's okay for us to.
For, for me to submit this to banks and to send it out. We would actually post it locally in our, in our paper, looking about what we're probably making a short one, short little column or a short little thing saying, interested parties, please contact our office. And then we give them the entire thing.
And then once, once we gather all the information, is that something that we would vote on?
We would then come back to you with, okay, here's what we've gotten. We either, we have no recommend, you know, we have no change to make, or here's what we're recommending.
Can I get a motion?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Okay, back to, sorry about that, back to transfer for construction payment, construction funds. We are seeking to transfer six hundred and nine thousand dollars, six hundred and nine, three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents from our bond account in Cornerstone to our operating accountant artist. And we would entertain a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Okay. Next is our approval of the teacher and administrator recruitment plan, recruitment and retention plan. This is an annual, um, plan that has to be done. And this, this, uh, Kimball's here to answer any questions about this as well. It's a little bit different than what we had last year.
Yes, it has to do with recruiting minorities to our work force. And it is something we've always done in the past, but the guidelines for it have changed a little more in depth than it used to be. It has to be uploaded to our website. Um, the first goal has to do with the recruiting staff. And, um, on that second page, and it may be on the back for you, there's some data about our district as far as employees. Um, and this was in the twenty one, twenty two school year. This is about applicants. It, it doesn't have to do with who was hired, but it's applicants to our district. Um, three hundred and two licensed applicants and five point three percent were a minority group. Fourteen percent declined to identify and eighty percent were, were white. And then classified, we had two hundred and forty seven classified applicants in that school year and seven percent were a minority, twenty two percent declined to identify and seventy percent. And you can see there's action steps as to what we will do to, to help encouraging minorities to apply here. Um, the second goal has to do with retaining those employees. And I have written in our recruitment and retention plan that we have in place, we're certified and classified into that goal. So hopefully things will move forward through legislature and I won't have to change that. Um, and then the last goal has to do with expanding and coordinating our LEAP services, which is limited English proficiency services within our own programs within the district to encourage people to come back to work here, so, and to go into education. So there's action sets with each of those goals. And, and again, this, this is a compliance thing that all districts must do, but they have made it a little bit more detailed and in depth this year. And there's a form on the back that Tina will be bringing me that has to have word of proof.
By looking at the numbers, it kind of seems like we do need to work on it.
Has to do with getting applicants in those areas, so. That last page you have is data that we pulled from the ADE system. That data is already populated there through our own school.
This one?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it shows you, um, the student body and it's broken down by different ethnicities. Also your teachers and administrators. And then I pulled from census data to add in the, the data for minorities among our residents. I will tell you that's, that resident data is based on the whole county though, so relies, you know, a portion of the districts.
This is Madison County.
Uh-huh, just on the resident part, the student body, teachers, administration, just from our district. It's interesting as you start looking at those statistics.
Oh, it is.
We added, and Mr. Warren can speak more to this than I can because it was his idea last year, but we added a place on our applications to be able to retrieve this data for this plan. So I don't know if you knew at that point it was going to become this setup.
We had been told it was coming, that this information was going to be in our application system. We didn't have a way to track, you know, the, the demographics of the applicants if they were willing to. And there wasn't anything illegal about us asking, as long as you give the option to, for them to decline to answer that question. So we, we knew that we were going to need it, uh, for the upcoming year, so. So we added that, uh, fairly quickly after we got approved for last year. And then on top of that, you know, I spent, I went, you know, we tried to recruit in areas that probably we haven't before. You know, we went to career fairs in Pine Bluff and we went to career fairs in, uh, Arkadelphia and, uh, Russellville, which we've probably been wrestling for, University of Arkansas, you know, places that we do go with, some that we probably haven't been before.
Were any of them successful?
I don't know that they were successful now. I will say that they might've gotten some applications out of it, but I don't know that we hired anybody. I can't honestly say that, that anybody applied. I, I gave them our links to our application site, so.
You'll notice that two of these goals were extensions from goals from previous years. And that was one of the ones that was an extension with, and that's written into the plan was the career fairs.
No further questions or that I would ask to be have a motion to approve the teacher and administrator recruitment and retention.
So, let me ask you this, if they don't apply, are we, I mean, we can't make people apply, right?
Cannot make.
So they can't hold that against us if they don't?
No, we just have to, I mean, we have to show that we're trying.
They have to have a real file to them, yes, I understand. But I mean, if, if nobody comes in there and applies, I mean, they really can't do much about it.
That's, that's correct.
But if we don't hire somebody that applies for a job, then, then they say something, then we'll just ban on us, right? If they're fully qualified, same, everything.
Well, I mean, we still have a process. It has the potential, I would say.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, okay. I'm just trying to get this in my head.
Yes, sir.
So on this non-certified person working on certification, so is that like taking our aides and stuff and trying to get them in? I know what the teacher program is, I'm familiar with it. So is it trying to get them to become a teacher in our district through this program?
I mean, that's, that would ultimately be the goal. Um, it doesn't necessarily limit them to here within the district and through that program, they can be hired anywhere. But ultimately, we're, we're providing them that, that avenue that we, we would want to them for them to be happy with.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Thank you. Uh, next is the approval for contracted services for special education and student services. This is, uh, on the, this is number two on the report from this, from Ms. McComb. You can see that, as we go, if you want to address any part of this.
The list that you have are people that we use for therapies. Um, therapy we use for St. Paul's speech and occupational therapy for Huntsville. Uh, George Negretti is our occupational therapist. Uh, Marion Canaus provides speech, she has several therapists that work for her. Francis Way is for a vision consultant that's required for a student. Um, the Arkansas Children's Hospital has a program with ears if we have any, um, services that we need for hearing impaired. And then Arissa Health, I did not get a, um, MOU or a contract back from them, but that is who we use, um, through OGC. I was at Barnes. And all of those are contracted services, so, that we use to provide that for our students.
Are we still using the co-op for the pre-k program?
Yes. Yes.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Thank you. Last on the new business is the MOU for NTI, Second Area Career Services Center, Career Center, excuse me. Uh, this is an annual agreement that we entered to, that they can provide our, you know, basically kind of our CTE classes, the ones that we need through that, through that system.
They do our diesel mechanic.
Right.
And we got several signed up and complacent.
None, I don't know. I assume so.
Yes, we do. We have, uh, well, there's eight or nine for CNA, which is not through NTI, but, uh, we've got twelve to fifteen in diesel. It probably doesn't need to be, and that's including St. Paul kids as well.
Will this help ease some of the fundraising?
Uh, this, this is, what this is, um, if, if I'm overstepping Mr. Warren, just let me know. This is a articulation credit, so what that means is that if they take the classes here and they go to NTI, they get credit for it in NTI. It's not concurrent credit, which is what we have with North Ark, which means they get actual credit there. It's just they have to go to that center to get the credit.
They supply our welders in, in the welding program, it does, and then the curriculum for both programs.
So we charge welders for the classroom, for the guys who need it, so.
And then the instructor, we contract. Um, our diesel mechanic instructor was already our employee throughout about it, but the welding instructor is contracted service through NTI.
Do you have a wish? All in favor?
Okay, next is our transfer request. As you can see, uh, the ones that are listed there. Seven had not been. Best, uh, we have a motion, second, to accept the transfer.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Did we lose Connie along the way?
Uh, well, she just, I was just about, she'd asked if we could call her, and she said she's having a little bit of trouble hearing you guys on her, on her virtual side.
I feel like we were all up here making-
All right, Ms. Timberg, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah.
Miss you.
Okay, the last item, uh, least approval is the personnel resignations, hires, transfers.
When, I have a question on the last one, and it's when somebody wants to transfer to another school or a teacher or something like this, do we ask for an exit statement?
When they resign or move on.
Yes.
We have not, uh, done, at least not, uh, a formalized exit interview with them from, from the district office. They probably do, I mean, they would speak to building principals as to that resignation, or sometimes they put on their letters why they're resigning and like that, but we do not have one.
Well, I mean, as hard as it is to get help, if there's a problem, we need to find it, so we need to probably look into doing something like that. Even with parents pulling their kids out of the school, I think. I mean, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I mean, we're having, I don't have a discussion about this. I mean, I really think we got something we need to know, because if there's a problem, we need to address it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, were all teachers that submitted or requested that, um, to resign, was there a resignation?
Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
You just resignation was the last thing we heard, Connie.
Oh, okay. Was every teacher, any teacher that wanted to submit a resignation that did or requested that they be allowed to resign, was that honored?
We had one that we did not honor.
And so what was the basis for accepting a resignation or not accepting a resignation?
Uh, it was my decision, and it was based on, uh, whether or not we, I felt like we could cover it, uh, through in-house systems that we had in place. Meaning in, 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 in personnel, personnel already within the district.
Did we make an attempt to see if we could honor it?
We did, yes. Yes, ma'am, we did.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Principals, do you all feel like you are adequately staffed to run your buildings adequately?
If you approve this, yeah.
For best practices, you can get good opportunity.
I'm, I'm short in key position, um, unfortunately, so we're hoping, um, we-
But we don't have an applicant.
We don't have an applicant. We have an offer in that person has not, um, it's supposed to let me know by Friday, so we'll have to be creative in one key position, but otherwise, it's-
Probably just getting close.
Are you, are you free Monday?
Right now, we're doing it for you.
No, I'm just saying, that, that's, that's a tough position to be in.
Yes, it is.
I'm not saying anything bad about, you know, what you guys do, I, it's just, that's-
I know all of you guys have been working really hard all summer. It's just, coming into Monday, we don't want you guys to feel, how am I going to get this done?
You don't feel like the overall morale at your buildings is good with all your teachers and stuff? That's good, I mean.
I do, I did want to point out, um, and this is not on the fault of the district, but we are, we do need a CNA instructor, which that comes from North Ark. And we do need a, a welding instructor that comes from NTI, so those are, those are people that they, that they, that they take care of, so. Um, I did get a call from, uh, the one from North Ark, and I've got a call back when we're done, uh, just-
So how does that go back to this, what we just approved?
It doesn't, because this is, this is a different, this is just to get-
That's just the curriculum that we just approved?
Right, that's just so the kids can, if, when they're done, they can go to NTI and get credit for what they did over here as a college credit. So that has nothing to do with the higher ed. Right, right, right.
There was a guy that lived in Kingston that used to teach at NTI. I can't remember his name, but he retired from driving to Springdale. I wonder, I don't, I don't, he's, I think he's seventy by now, though, but I don't know if he would be interested in filling in till we found somebody, if I can figure out what his name was. Does he might know him works at JV Manufacturing Steel? You know if I still works up there?
No, few.
He used to come out there and do welding class at the, at the shop I worked at if he wanted to get certified. And he was from Kingston, and I can't remember his name, because that was in the early nineties. But he was, he was an instructor then, and he retired from NTI out there, but if he still lived in Kingston, that might be an option. I don't know, he probably still wouldn't be certified, or would he be? I mean, would he, if he's been out that long?
I know that there's specific criteria that they have, just like we do.
Yes.
For, for, for that, so.
If I can figure out his name, I may holler at Mr. Warren and have him, maybe somebody contact him and see if he's still concurring on what it would take if he'd be interested. I mean, he was, he was a good welding instructor.
Did you have anything to add, Connie?
No, not to this, not to that.
Steve, was it John Mark?
Who?
John Mark.
No, it was a, it was a different name, kind of like my, I had open shame, but it wasn't open shame, it was a different name. I had one, you don't, if you hear it, you know it, but one was real common, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the hires and transfers?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and read these out for us. Resignations, certified, Kirsten, or Kirsten Crabtree Davidson, high school speculation, special education teacher, seven-one, twenty-two. Erin McCaslin, uh, HMS, sixth grade English teacher, seven-eighteen, twenty-two. Angela Winters, HMS computer tech, technology teacher, seven-eleven, twenty-two. Madeline Buehler, uh, uh, Watson Primary, special education teacher, seven-one, twenty-two. Kim Ryder, HMS, special education teacher, seven-fourteen, twenty-two. Sherry Littrell, HMS, seventh grade science, eight-four, twenty-two. Stacy Torrell, HHS teacher. This person actually was hired, uh, earlier in the summer, but had not been on campus, and we could not get them to return our contacts, so that's why they're on our resignation list right now. And they were not here today, she was not here today, so. I'm going to say that Tebles, Comus, transportation, uh, bus route driver, seven-one. Neil Sligler, transportation bus route driver, seven-one, twenty-two. Jamie Jackson, welding instructor, transportation bus route driver, six-thirty, twenty-two. Hire certified, Angela Ray, uh, St. Paul Elementary, pre-K teacher, seven-one, twenty-two. Kim Smith, St. Paul Elementary, fourth grade teacher, seven-one, twenty-two. Joseph Zachary Parish, uh, HMS Resource, seven-one, twenty-two. Kendra McGaw, uh, high school counselor, two-hundred-and-ten day contract, seven-twenty-five, twenty-two. Savannah Smith, St. Paul Agri teacher, two-twenty contract, seven-one, twenty-two. Samantha Ellis, uh, St. Paul School music teacher, seven-one, uh, twenty-two. Sorry, there's an extra two on there. About two-hundred-and-twenty-two. Jacqueline Kelly, uh, Huntsville High School Special Education Teacher, seven-one, twenty-two. Victoria Dodson, Huntsville, uh, High School Physical Science Teacher, point-five day, uh, on eight-eight, twenty-two.
Glad to see everybody.
Pardon?
Glad to see everybody.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Matthew, classified, Matthew Seltzer, transportation and bus driver, one-hundred-and-seventy-eight day, contract, eight-nine, twenty-two. Nadine Omas, Oness, sorry, uh, food services, Washington, or, excuse me.
It's Owens.
Owens, sorry.
Owens, sorry.
I spelled that. Uh, Watson Primary Food Service, one-hundred-and-eighty-day contract, eight-eight, twenty-two. Christina Brown, high, Huntsville High School Food Service, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, contract, eight-eight, twenty-two. Transfers, Cole Harriman, Huntsville High School Teacher Soccer Coach, point-two-seven index to Huntsville High School Teacher Track Coach, point-two-five index, eight-one, twenty-two. Marty Carroll, Huntsville High School Teacher Assistant Coach, point-two-five index to Huntsville High, Huntsville High School Teacher Assistant Coach, point-two-five, eight-one, twenty-two. I think they were, they were coaching some different, if I remember right. Uh, Emily Melton, Huntsville Intermediate School, fourth grade teacher to Huntsville Middle School, seventh grade science teacher, eight-eight, twenty-two. Cole Hallmark, Hallmark, Watson Primary, first grade teacher to Huntsville Middle School Sixth Grade Literacy Teacher, eight-eight, twenty-two. Emmy Schluderman, Watson Primary, pre-K classified to Watson Primary Certified, seven-one, twenty-two. Classified, uh, Leona Jackson, Huntsville High School Food Service Worker to Huntsville High School Food Service Manager, eight-eight, twenty-two.
Got a question before we do this. Are we going to get another resource officer, or we still just have one?
We have two. Uh, I have forgotten the gentleman's name. Cole. Sorry, what? That's not Cole.
Leave out the trouble.
Leave out the trouble. I have confirmed that with, uh, County Sheriff's Department, uh, as well. I just haven't, I haven't had a chance to contact him, to speak with him specifically, but we have, we have to.
Is he graduate?
Yeah, I'm sure his mom was on the retirement or resignation list.
I just want to thank everybody for everything you do. We appreciate y'all, really do. Everybody.
Appreciate it, you guys.
Takes a lot to, uh, to make the same run, and, oh, you guys work hard at it, so we appreciate it, sure.
Good luck for us this weekend.
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask a lot of questions, because I've been out of school a long time. I'm probably the only one in the room here, but some of this stuff they didn't have, my kids has been out quite a while, so I'm, I'm not picking on nobody. I'm just, I don't know, I'm going to ask, okay? Don't feel like I'm picking on you, point you out. I do, I will, if I need to, but I won't.
Connie, you got anything?
Yes, I would like to thank the Chickorhomer's for all the door prizes this morning, and I heard they were amazing, and I wish I could have had a chance. Really great of them to go out and get those.
They did an outstanding job. It was, it was good to be in that facility, it was good to have our teachers in that facility, and our staff. Uh, the vendor fair went well. They did give out very good prizes today, uh, through a drawing, and it was really, I was happy to see our faculty and staff back. We appreciate them all, but it's good to have them back on campus, we're good. I have one other thing to bring up. Our next meeting typically would be scheduled for the first Monday of the month. That is Labor Day. Uh, do we want to move to Tuesday? Do you want to try and move to the next week? Does it matter?
It doesn't matter, you're not working that day.
So we, I mean, we can do it that day if you want to.
It does, makes me no difference.
I'm up for whatever. Connie?
What, if it was what?
So the, the next meeting is scheduled for, uh, the fifth, which would be a Labor Day, which is on Labor Day. Do you have, are you opposed to having it that day, or would you like to move it to a different day?
What is the majority want? I'll go with whatever the majority wants.
I would like it recommended the next week, so I can have one more week to process through the power stuff.
So that would make it the twelfth?
Yes.
Give over the holiday off.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that, everybody else is.
No, so we need to make a motion all day, or what?
I don't think so, we'll just, uh, we'll just have it in our notes.
Also, when did we decide on timing?
I didn't, I never heard back from anybody, so I-
I'm, I'm fine with moving it to five-thirties if it is-
Five-thirties is fine with everybody else, we'll move to five-thirty.
Five-thirty, good for me.
Okay. So next meeting will be-
It just makes it easier on you guys, too. Five-thirty does.
Hang around town for twenty, twenty-three.
Makes it tough on people.
Next meeting will be on September twelfth at, uh, five-thirty. That was all I had to request.
All right, so, so I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?